This is late. I wasn't looking, but I was sleeping.
Here's Stephen.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning.
Miss Conway. You see the roof?
Huh?
You see the roof? Well, I just found out about my car that had fourteen thousand dollars. It's still worth doing. The appraisal is twenty-six thousand dollars. So now the question is, how quickly will you fix it? No, I don't worry about that. I think it will be. Good morning. My question is, how quickly will it be fixed? And I told her, I said, they said we contacted the adjusters. I said, if you don't get a hold of us today, would you please call me back? They said, it's not been very responsive. I said, I want to... Because the adjusters got to come back out now. What they did was, after they went through and opened everything up, they have now come up with the additional five thousand dollars worth of repair work. Now they got to get the guy to go and sign off on it. And I just want that to be done ASAP so they can get those parts ordered.
You're going to look out there because to go on strike, you're going to have to get local parts from plants because they're not out right.
This is Ford, so I might, uh...
I know, also, I could be...
Yeah, the parts might be really, really available.
Parts will be the problem.
Well, they won't be the problem then, right?
No, not now. They'll have plenty of parts. There's nobody to put them together.
Parts is parts. You guys remember since this birthday?
What's that?
It's Connie's birthday today. Make some comments. We'll give her a break because it's her birthday. Happy birthday to her.
What do you want to say?
Huh? Who did that?
Since we called the meeting now.
I think I do it the second she walks through the door.
Yeah. That's good, Barry. Announce it.
Ladies and gentlemen, this morning is Ms. Conway's birthday. So since she's a little bit late, we thought we might surprise her. As soon as she walks in door, I'll lead you in happy birthday.
On my birthday, I just canceled the meeting.
I remember that. How can we have a meeting? It's a first chair's birthday. New tradition.
You know, we did get a chance to ask yesterday, but I want to find out is how they're handing the liability on these issues for irrigation districts and...
Oh, that's got to be looked at.
I mean, they're doing it in front of us if I say it. So I want to find out how they're doing it because it's a big issue inside New York. The irrigation district, understandable itself, was concerned about any kind of... I mean, their approach is, let's just pipe it and it goes away. But if you're looking at recharge opportunities and aesthetics and so forth, then you really want to keep those canals in there. But why should the district bear the liability? It ought to be borne by the city or the development or whatever to... That's the logical thing. And the other thing is, they should take over the maintenance of it. Because the Altis not going to take care of it aesthetically. They're going to take care of it like everything else, spray it and it's like hell.
Get the Johnsons down.
So until you let the city or whoever come in and use it as part of like their open space and they maintain it and they take the liability, then the irrigation district is really ought to be on board with that because they're avoiding the cost of maintaining it straight to the river.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Connie. Happy birthday to you.
Oh, thank you. I'd forgotten till just this moment.
Well, we thought we'd take a couple extra minutes today because it was your birthday. And on my birthday, I just canceled the meeting.
Okay. Thank you. I'm totally embarrassed. Am I red enough?
If you please join me in the flag salute in a moment of silence. Lou.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're going to begin this meeting on a very positive note. I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize the Human... I mean, the Health and Human Services Agency for being a 2007 CSAC Challenge Award recipient and that CSAC is the California Association of Supervisors. HHSA has received this honor for the youth transition program. And this provides work opportunities for youth who are transitioning out of foster care. A lot of times when we have state programs, they go to a certain age and they disappear. They just kind of leave people hanging and they just drop from the rolls. This is a very unique and I also believe should be an inspirational program for other counties that we can take these youth and show them opportunities of working within the county to give them job skills. And it's been successful. And it's been in place for less than a year. We've hired approximately four of these people to work for the county. Two have received employment outside of the county. But it gives them the ability and the understanding of what a job is. There were 260 Challenge Award entries and this is one of the top three awards given by the state of California. And the other reason, besides it being so creative, is the fact that it's very easy to replicate this program. It's not brain surgery. It's just having the concept of going forward with a program that no one else has done before. So the board would like to congratulate Human Health Services for receiving this award and for the great job and the innovative thinking that our staff has had.
If I thought I could get away with it, I'd just say thank you and sit back down. There's a lot of people that actually got involved in this project. In the history, I think some of you are already aware of, Kristen Bennett called myself and David Crawford over for some discussions with one of the providers and we started working on the idea of what we could do with a lot of kids that are at risk and touch our system. And this is the product. David came up with this idea and a lot of people joined in and made it, I think, what a very successful program. Several points, I guess, I want to make. Second point I'd want to make is that we have coaches or mentors that help these kids. They don't just come in cold and... They are expected to work at the same level as anybody coming into our system. But they do have help. That help comes from other workers. People that are employed by us who raise their hand when we ask, would any of you be a coach? Would any of you be a mentor? Would you help these kids out? And there are a lot of them. So I went to their meeting about a week ago and it's just nice to see. We have a lot of people that want to help. You've already mentioned that there's quite a number of kids in this system. We've hired up several of them and it's only going to get better. I think they're already working... The people on this program are working on seeing how to expand it to the rest of the county. And as you know, we're already working with the private sector. There's four individuals in particular, I guess, I want to introduce to your board. These are the people that brought this program together and it took three organizations to do it, really. And if you'd stand when I read your name. Bonnie Parks from CSAT, Community Services Employment Training. Donna Caddell from the WID. Christina Jones from our own Tulare Works. And Michelle Reynoso, who works with our Child Welfare Services Program. These four individuals had to work out all the details and get it. And so thank you very, very much. And thank you for the opportunity. A, to get the thing together and support it when we brought it to you first. And secondly, for allowing me to bring people to you that were responsible for putting it in place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, we get to say something. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will tell you that for the past six years, I have served on a panel of judges for these awards through the California State Association of Counties. We are not allowed to judge entries from our own county. So I can't claim as having anything to do with this. And actually, the way the judging is, it's split up into groups. They have panels of what they assume to be experts in various areas. And I had to sit on my hands and watch someone from Santa Clara County who had this entry in their award packet rally for this and say how good it was. And I was just biting my tongue because it just is not... Would not have been fair for me to weigh in on it. But I was very proud to sit there and as I listened to someone else talk about our program and about the good work that was being done. It was really wonderful and I congratulate each and every one of you for doing this. And I would tell you that this is a very high honor because it's the replicable award, which means that it's something that can be repeated in any county in California. Something that can be done. And I'm just so proud of all of you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for giving me a chance to speak this morning.
Well, briefly, having worked the last several months on the Tulare County Gang Task Force, one of the things we've talked about is jobs for youth. We're talking about at-risk youth here. And I think this is a wonderful program, something that not only can be duplicated in other counties, but in other departments in our county as well. So one of the important things as you're working with these at-risk youth is to get some clean money in their pockets. It's very easy for them to go out and do a strong arm or some type of robbery and get some money that way. This is good, clean money. Plus it prepares them for the future employment. So job well done, folks. And I hope to see this expand throughout other departments in the county as well as throughout the cities in our county as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The late Julian Simon, who was a famous economist and author, wrote a book called The Ultimate Resource. The ultimate resource is not... Is something we might not think about normally, but it's people. And I think this program is an indication of sort of a sea gate chain sometimes. We think about people almost as being a liability. You know, the cost of providing services. How do we provide health care? How do we do this? How do we do that? Feeling to recognize that people are the ultimate resource. And as we take these kids who are termed out because we changed the law. It used to be they had to be our responsibility if they were 21. Now it's 18. We are giving them an opportunity to utilize their resources, their being, if you will, to help us and to help themselves. And I think that's really a very commendable effort. So I want to thank the agency and all the folks who had a hand in making this come to pass because I believe it's a great program. Thanks.
Last week, I had the opportunity to go over to workforce development and actually see these young people and talk to them and address them. To see the enthusiasm that's in this group of people was outstanding. And the program is working so great. We just need to expand it, make it bigger so we can get more people involved in it because it's just a great, great program. Thank you so much.
And congratulations. Tulare County's been innovative in a lot of different areas and I'm glad to see that we're very innovative in the youth side of it, giving them responsibilities. And I'd like to thank all our partners in this program because it would not have happened if it was just Tulare County alone. So thank you again. We're going to take up the consent calendar. We're going to pull item number four.
Chairman, if there are no other items we handled separately, I would move approval of consent calendar items three through 16, absent item four.
Second. Move and second, please cast your vote. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to an untimed item, item 17.
Good morning, Chairman Nishida and members of the board. Juliette Webb, Senior Administrative Analyst in the County Administrative Office. Item 17 on today's agenda are nine draft responses to the 2006-2007 grand jury final report. These responses require your review and approval. I have prepared a summary of each of the nine draft responses that I will go through at this time. Please feel free to interject any questions you may have as I go along. The first report contains 20 findings and eight recommendations surrounding how Tulare County schools are dealing with gang members. Seventeen of the findings are specific to schools and so not within the purview of the Board of Supervisors. The draft response finds agreement with the remaining three findings with a minor clarification noted on one of those findings. Of the eight recommendations given by the grand jury, four are not within the purview of the Board of Supervisors. Two of the recommendations regarding collaborative efforts toward prevention and intervention in gang activity have been implemented. One requires further analysis and one has not been implemented exactly as stated by the grand jury, but has been addressed by the county in other ways. The second report is in regards to automated external defibrillators, or AEDs, in Tulare County buildings. This report contains 12 findings and five recommendations. Based on information provided by Tulare County Health and Human Services Agency, the draft response shows agreement with seven findings and partial agreement to two other findings needing minor clarifications. Two findings relate to the California Highway Patrol into public access places other than county buildings and so do not pertain to the board's response. The AED report contains five recommendations centered around locating AEDs in all county buildings. Four of the recommendations have not been implemented as they require further analysis to determine if the recommendations are feasible or not. One of the recommendations is in reference to city buildings. The next report contains 13 findings and one recommendation regarding juvenile mental health care in Tulare County. Based on information provided by the Mental Health Division of HHSA and the Tulare County Probation Department, three of the findings in the draft report show agreement. Eight of the findings needed minor clarification and two of the findings are not agreed with. This report contains one recommendation to utilize a wing of the Tulare County Juvenile Detention Facility as an inpatient outpatient juvenile mental health facility. This recommendation will not be implemented as it is not warranted at this time. The fourth grand jury report is in regards to Tulare County Office of Emergency Services. This report contains 10 findings and three recommendations. The draft response indicates agreement with six of the 10 findings. Four findings needed minor clarifications. Of the three recommendations given, two in regard to the location of the Office of Emergency Services within the county system will not be implemented as they are not warranted at this time. The third recommendation, surrounding working more closely with all business, private, voluntary, and nonprofit organizations to further develop disaster preparedness, will be developed over the next year. The next grand jury report contains 10 findings and four recommendations in regard to code compliance. Based on the confidentiality of the complaint referred to in the grand jury's report, the draft report shows that there is no independent basis by which to respond to any of the specific findings. Therefore, all of the responses to the findings in the draft report are based on responses given in Tulare County Resource Management Agency's response to the same report. Seven of the findings show agreement. Two require minor clarification and one finding shows disagreement. Two of the recommendations involving enforcement of penalties and fines for code violations have been implemented and enforced since August of 2001. The draft response indicates that recommendation three, that fines and penalties should not be rescinded, will not be implemented as it is a constituent's right to appeal and assess penalty or fine and that the decision to rescind these fines are made by the Board of Supervisors on a case-by-case basis. The fourth recommendation requires further analysis and is being looked into by RMA's Code Compliance Division. The next report concerns diminishing valley oak trees in Moonee Grove Park. This report contains eight findings and six recommendations. The draft report indicates agreement with six of the findings, with one finding needing minor clarification and one finding that we are unable to respond to. The recommendations concerning improving how the valley oaks are watered, improving the existing reforestation beds, and reforesting Moonee Grove Park have either been implemented or will be implemented over the next year. Two of the recommendations will not be implemented. One is not warranted and the other involves a prohibitive labor cost. The seventh report contains 17 findings and four recommendations regarding non-compliance of land use ordinance by Miramonte Sanitation. The draft report indicates agreement with 15 of the findings, with one finding needing minor clarification and one finding indicating disagreement. As in the previous report regarding code compliance, this draft report indicates that the recommendation regarding the rescinding of fines will not be implemented. Additionally, the recommendation that court remedies must be sought for continued violations will not be implemented as the county has a range of effective alternatives in addition to court remedies. One of the recommendations requires further analysis by RMA's Code Compliance Division and the final recommendation is not within the purview of the Board of Supervisors. The next report concerns staff safety at the Tulare County Juvenile Detention Facility. This report contains four findings and three recommendations. The four findings actually contain 17 different sub-finding based on information provided by Tulare County Probation and Mental Health. Of the 17 findings, seven responses indicate agreement. Four needed clarification and six indicate disagreement. The two recommendations concerning training and enforcement of juvenile detention facility policy and procedure have been implemented. The draft report indicates that the third recommendation involving wages and benefits will not be implemented at this time as the current contract with the labor union referenced is in place until June of 2009. The ninth and final report contains nine findings and seven recommendations involving vicious animal control in our cities. As the draft report indicates, eight of the nine findings concern different city ordinances surrounding vicious animal control and thus are not within the purview of the Board of Supervisors. For the one finding pertaining to Tulare County, the draft response indicates agreement. All of the recommendations in this report pertain to city governments, not to Tulare County. Now that you have received an overview of the nine draft responses, it is requested that you approve all the responses and authorize the chairman to sign each of them. This concludes my presentation. Any questions?
My only comment on the oak one was that there was a reference made to a composite photograph that was made available. And in reviewing that composite photograph, I noted that there was an error. One of the photographs that would reflect a continuing degradation, if you will, was out of place. So there would appear to be a lack... There has been a diminishment of the canopy cover, but not of the kind of magnitude that it would illustrate from that photograph. Because, I mean, that composite, because it's not accurate.
Correct. And while I don't... The report doesn't... The draft report doesn't specifically refer to the error in the photograph. It does speak to the level of deforestation not being to the extreme level that the grand jury's report indicates.
And I think that your response otherwise is accurate and valid and reforestation obviously is the... Plus, our new system will hopefully take care of the problem. So, thank you.
Any other questions? Is this an action item? Who'd you approve?
Second.
Move and second, please cast your vote. Motion carries unanimously. Because we have a couple of minutes before our 9:30 timed item, we'll move public comments now. And I have a request from George Mathis.
We're a little late coming in, but I think we picked a good day. I want to thank the members of the board for their assistance to Larry Veterans Memorial... I mean, excuse me. Let me wake up. I'm in the wrong meeting. Tulare Veterans Opportunity Day Committee for your contribution and your moral support and we totally appreciate it. And you're all invited for March the 26th of 2008, from 8:00 in the morning till noon to attend. It's to bring in the veterans and hope we not only jobs, but information and so forth. I'd like to introduce Jim Pidgen. He's a member of the committee and Jean Sesten, a member of the committee. Jim is also our new state commander of AMVETS. And Jean here is one that doesn't speak very much, but he's one hell of a worker, I'll tell you that. But anyway, we want to appreciate... I don't know if you folks want to say anything, Jim?
No.
But thanks again. And even though it wasn't a large mountain, we'll probably be having that little slip filled out and ask you for the same contribution again. But thank you. And please come. We enjoy seeing you when you come. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chairman, I would just like to add that the veterans are so active and do so much. We really appreciate that. And God bless you, George. You're already in line. You're making sure that we fund your event in March 2008. So he's right on target.
Good morning. I'm Dale Simmons. I live at 1501 South Mountain Street, Visalia. I'm here as a concerned citizen regarding item two. Just a few comments. We all know that statewide air pollution, 41%, is due to autos, which is not controlled by the San Joaquin Valley Air...
Mr. Chairman. There's a public hearing on this item and this is not going to be part of the record.
Right.
Ma'am, could you wait until item two is called, which is in like two minutes?
Sure.
Thank you. I had... My hearing's off this morning. Well, we're going to use our clock up here today for a public hearing since it says 9:30.
Faster than my clock in the car.
Have you concluded public comments? Pardon? Have you concluded public comments?
Are there any other public comments regarding items that are not on the agenda but under the purview of the Board of Supervisors? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period and we'll move to item two of public hearing. And Mr.... Mrs. Penny? Or who's presenting?
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman Nishida and Board of Supervisors. I am here to be on behalf of the county's Resource Management Agency. And the item before you today is to request an amendment to Tulare County zoning ordinance pertaining to planned community zones.
Could you please identify yourself?
Yes, I will. My name is Dan Garcia and I'm with the Resource Management Agency. I'm a planner and countywide planner. The intent of the planned community zone ordinance is to unify large-scale development projects. And such projects are defined as those of 200 acres and greater. The purpose of the planned community zone ordinance is to provide and promote orderly planning and to enable the county to adopt measures for the development of areas compatible with the PC zone. The PC zone will also assist in the implementation of the general plan objectives and policies. In the next couple of slides, I'll describe the procedures that are... In the next couple of slides, I'll describe the procedures that are going to be set forth for the proposed ordinance, as well as the objectives of the ordinance, and some of the requirements. The draft PC zone ordinance consists of application procedures that require authorization from your board, master development plan, and an area development plan. The master development plan is much like a community plan, and the area development plan, or ADP, is the equivalent to a specific plan, as adopted by the state legislature. The PC zone will also require appropriate fees, and it should be noted that any development in a PC zone would be prohibited from occurring in the PC zone prior to the adoption of the specific plan equivalent, or the ADP. As I mentioned in my previous slide, one of the major components of the PC zone ordinance is the submittal of a master development plan, and as I mentioned earlier, a master development plan is much like a community plan. There are two components of the master development plan that would be required to be submitted, including a text version and a map version, since that plan would have some text, and it would consist of text and map, and that would be a requirement. The text would be, basically require a detailed project description, anticipated phasing and sequence of the development, as well as general land use statistics, and proposed uses of land by their equivalent general land use designation. It would also require utilization maintenance plan, and also a preliminary financial plan. So that would be the primary text portion of the ordinance, of the master development plan as required by the ordinance. Master development plan map would require that you submit a natural topographic character of land, map, grading and drainage plan, and you also identify the location of all major streets, roads, and other circulation elements. And finally, that you map out the locations of public uses, quasi-public uses, open space, and undisturbed natural land. The second major submittal that would be required is an area development plan, and as I stated earlier as well, area development plan is much like a specific plan. In fact, we have made it equivalent to specific plans, so that you follow state law as to what a specific plan must consist of. So at a minimum, you must meet the state law requirements for a specific plan in order to have your project move forward. The four major components of a area development plan, or specific plan, would be the site utilization plan, regulations, area design plan, and financing plan. The site utilization plan would basically require that you submit a clear description of your boundaries, grading and drainage, and natural or physical features of the project. It would also assure that you describe the proposed transportation routes, proposed deagments, and land uses, as well as identification of employment, consideration to jobs-to-housing ratio. Furthermore, you'd have to include regulations, that means you would include development standards for your project, and also those regulations to classify and restrict the separate types of land uses designated under the county's general plan, and by the zoning ordinance. The area design plan would require that you submit guidelines for the site, including building guidelines, landscape designs, and also energy conservation guidelines, so you include how your project will conserve energy. And a financing plan, the importance of the financing plan is to ensure that all development projects provide adequate public facilities and services, including operations and maintenance. Basically, the PC zone procedures would require that you submit two types of plans, the master development plan and area development plan. Now, like I stated before, the master development plan is just like the community plan, it's a macro look at the project, and the area development plan is a more specified look at the project, and it could be that you're identifying phases of your greater community. And before I conclude with my request today, adopt an amendment to the Tulare County Plan Zoning Ordinance for Planned Communities, I want to point out two things. One is that the planning department, we find that this would be one additional tool to help us address some of the large-scale projects countywide that are currently proposed in the county, and second of all, by no means would this particular ordinance circumvent any environmental review. Project will continue, as always, to be assessed on its own individual merit, with consideration to environmental impacts and county-wide impacts. And of course, the alternatives that would be proposed today is, one, you either don't adopt the proposed ordinance, or that you make, you advise us on some changes to the ordinance. However, you'd be cognizant that if there are substantial changes that are proposed to this ordinance, it may have to go back to the Planning Commission for further recommendation and hearing. Okay, so, thank you, and I'd be willing to entertain any questions that-
As I've read through this a couple times, what's the trigger? I don't see a clear trigger here, is it 500 homes, 500 acres, 1,000 acres? What's the trigger to where you have to do this, and you're one home shy or one acre short of not having to do this?
Currently, we have it, currently, the part of the requirement is you have to be 200 acres and above. That really is the trigger, but you still have an option, it's not necessarily that if you're 200 acres and greater, you're committed to be in a planned community, it's that it's simply an available option, aside from our typical zoning standards that we have in place under the Tulare County zoning ordinance.
And where was that added in here? Because I didn't see the 200 acres, and as I read through the, I flipped through it again just now, looking for that 200-acre mark that you're talking about, I wasn't able to find that.
It should be, yeah, it's going to be under the application section, which is Section C, and it's subpart B, and it says, "No PC zone shall include less than 200 contiguous acres of land."
So is that the trigger, if you're over 200, you have to do it, or this is just a tool to do it?
It's an additional tool.
It seems to me like there would be a statement in here, if you're above a certain number of acres, you have to do it, you're required to do it.
No, actually, that's in the general plan. The general plan update contains a requirement that any project over 80 acres in size has to go through a specific plan. This gives you an additional option to go this route for larger projects, larger than 80 acres.
Okay, well, I understand, I'm just looking for a clear trigger, and I'm sure the development community would want to know if that's a trigger, so between 80 and 200 you can do-
Between 80 and 200, you can proceed through a specific plan requirement under the general plan update.
Any other questions? Okay, we're going to open the public hearing, then we'll bring it back to the board for the questions. We're going to open the public hearing on this matter. We restrict the public comments to three minutes, and please refrain from repeating the same information, and if you represent more than yourself, please identify who you represent, and we'll begin the public hearing. And please identify yourself and give us your address.
I think you probably know who I am. I'm Carol Clum, I live in Three Rivers, 45638 South Fork Drive, and I'm a member of the Tulare County Citizens for Responsible Growth. Today, the Board of Supervisors approved unanimously a legislative letter regarding an impending water crisis facing Tulare County. If that's what the Water Commission and the Board of Supervisors believe, why are you considering a new town amendment permitting large-scale development anywhere in the unincorporated areas of Tulare County? Shouldn't the Water Commission or a watershed council first be surveying the watershed to identify its boundaries, its groundwater supply, the extent of contamination of its wells, and its natural areas that absorb runoff and filter pollutants? The Owani Water Principles advise local governments to perform a water supply and demand analysis when preparing a general plan update. This has not been done. We cannot sustain vibrant livable communities if we cannot sustain clean and reliable water supplies. Water supply agencies like the Integrated Regional Water Management Commission created only two months ago in Tulare County should be consulted early in land use decisions, like permitting future large planned community zones. A water element needs to be included in the planned community zone. Delay consideration of this amendment until the general plan update is completed, and I'd like to make a request for the legislative letter regarding the impending water crisis facing Tulare County, please, today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please excuse my rookie mistake earlier. Dale Simmons, Visalia. We all know that statewide air pollution is 41% due to autos, and that's not controlled by the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District. Recent state and NGO reports finding that air quality decreases with increasing population due to sprawl. That was also written up in yesterday's B. A couple other things, the city of Visalia prefers no new cities and prefers concentric growth around existing cities to use existing infrastructure. And finally, a related issue, Mr. Cox, I hope you can represent me in the city, and I was hoping that the revenue sharing between the counties and cities should adequately cover the county's needs, so that we don't need a new county large development to cover costs. Thank you.
My name is Sarah Graber, I live in Three Rivers, 46101 South Fork Drive. I'm also here on behalf of Tulare County Citizens for Responsible Growth. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Consideration of this ordinance in the middle of our general plan update doesn't make sense, and it should be delayed until the update is complete. This would ensure that the ordinance is consistent with the vision ultimately put forth in our new general plan. For example, the first four principles put forth in the draft general plan goals and policies report emphasizes resource investment in existing communities and hamlets, and the preservation of agricultural resources and natural lands, and avoidance of rural residential sprawl. These are also ideals that are overwhelmingly supported by the citizens of Tulare County. This planned community zone, the way it's written here today with the countywide application, conflicts with both these goals and the expressed wishes of Tulare's residents. A planned community zoning ordinance that could be applied anywhere within the county's unincorporated areas would expose the county's agricultural and grazing lands to overwhelming pressure to develop, and would redirect resources and growth away from the communities and hamlets that desperately need them. And while I understand that there are many more regulatory hurdles before this zone can actually be applied, I ask the board to show the people of Tulare today that they are committed to the goals set forth in the general plan goals and policies report by, first of all, delaying consideration of this ordinance until the general plan update is completed. Secondly, if this ordinance is to be considered today, or later, ask the staff to rewrite the draft to restrict the potential application of this ordinance to lands within the development boundaries of existing unincorporated communities and hamlets. There is more than enough room within Tulare's development boundaries to accommodate 50 years of growth at existing development densities. Tulare simply does not need new towns. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address this matter in the public hearing? Seeing no one else, we're going to close the public hearing, and council, I see we have this closed session.
Mr. Chairman, it's listed on your board's closed session agenda, item C.
I believe we have, I have a couple of questions I need to ask about the procedure, so if we adjourn the closed session.
Who brings this really good coffee up here that I have to smell? You can bring the book back.
I have Emery, call Emery.
Maybe over there, I think, had copies too.
Four one five three five seven three six one eight. Emery Dunes. Four one five three five seven three six one eight. Three five seven three six one eight.
Three five seven.
Three six one eight.
Thank you. I'll save it in here so that...
That's what I've heard. I've never listened to it live, obviously, because I'm always in here, but that's what I've heard.
Well, I think we need to start listening right here so that we can, when we know something's going on. Now, if you put the tape in, you can still record it without actually stopping the mannequins, right?
Right. I can.
I wonder if you want to do that today, just in case. Save it.
You're going to tell him? You're going to fall in.
I'll go get one then.
Should be introducing myself as the...
Oh, okay. Not, for some reason, not. Okay, yeah, you know, we like to...
The wall that I'd like, because they have, like, half of them locked out, but the other half, I'm sure, right on the wall. The reflection right off that wall, you know, out from the light, it almost is right in the light.
And they were supposed to have to incorporate that in the general...
All this cool stuff, such as coming in, you know, it's like the base of it. So we're recording it and hoping...
So the whole...
Yeah.
So we got here, we're holding, we're holding, we're there.
So...
Yeah.
So we...
Yeah.
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 So, I don't think the density of that area is really probably, you know, it's coming over there.
I feel like many of the.
Are you trying to grow your bangs up? Are you trying to grow your bangs up? I had a bad hair day. Moving toward a new style or something.
Hey, well, I'd like to bring this matter back before the board. Board have any questions you'd like to ask or discussion?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think I just might like to comment on, on our, you know, receiving legal counsel in our closed session about legal issues and just wanted to respond to a couple of comments that were, that were raised. One is that, as I understand it, the passage of this ordinance today would not mean that somebody could come in tomorrow and file, uh, an application under it until sometime as we actually have our general plan update complete. Is that correct, counsel? That's correct. In that, in that regard, uh, I see this as being a positive move for the board to take because it, it is proactive rather than reactive. What we are trying to do is project out to future development in the county where the county is going, uh, in terms of, uh, process. And, uh, we've already done that in the past. We've had some things come before this board now that we've approved, where our, our staff has recited preliminary language in our general plan to demonstrate this is the direction that the county is going. Issues that were raised as far as air, water, uh, all those sorts of things will have to be addressed in any proposed project which comes forward before this board and before the planning commission. And that's not what we're here about today. I think we're here about today, the adoption of a, of an ordinance, which, as I say, is a proactive part in the county, providing a blueprint type of a thing, which is to our benefit as a county, as well as to any future development which might occur in the county. And so, um, I, I'm supportive of, of the action taken today in light of that.
Well, just a, a quick comment. You know, I, I think, uh, a, a zone like this will require more and better planning for the future than what we actually have now. It actually will give us an opportunity to require developers to provide better infrastructure and will give us a chance to look at, at what's happening. And I think this will actually direct the growth towards the areas that have been mentioned. You mentioned the hamlets, the, the communities. I think this is going to give those communities the opportunity to achieve the growth they want to. Without something like this, it's not going to be, uh, possible for them to achieve that type of growth. So I think this is a win-win for, uh, for the, the county as we look towards what type of development we'd like to see occur in the county. And also for the communities that would like to see the growth occur in their communities. It gives them another tool to work with. So I, I'm in support of this, uh, also realizing that they have to go through all the, uh, the, uh, flaming hoops before they actually get to do their project, which would be all the NEPA, SEQA, and all the other QUA's you can think of before they actually get to do a project. So I, I'm in support of this.
I just learned a new term, flaming hoops.
Flaming hoops. They're just not hoops anymore. They're flaming.
Chairman, if there's no other comments, I would move approval of the item.
Second.
Move and seconded. Please cast your vote. Motion carries in the house, sir. Okay, moving to item nineteen supervisor matters. We'll start today with Mr. Worthing. Looks like he's ready.
Uh, just to report to the board that, uh, we had an airboard meeting, San Joaquin Valley Air Push Control District, uh, last Thursday, where we adopted, uh, three new rules, or actually new, uh, updates of existing rules. And, uh, I, I think it was the beginning of what we're going to see more and more of, and that is that as we have, as we seek to go after uh, smaller and smaller pieces of pollution, air pollution, it becomes more and more expensive, uh, for the people that we regulate. And so, um, all rules were adopted, uh, but it was extremely, uh, difficult for the, uh, various industries that are regulated by these to, um, uh, to find them palatable. Because as I say, we're going after smaller and smaller pieces of, of, uh, air, uh, pollution and it's costing more and more money. So, uh, we're going to see more and more of these things happening in the future, unfortunately, as we, uh, in our never-ending quest to get, to cleaner air in the, in the valley. Uh, and lastly, um, um, one of the things that we did, and this is actually, I thought it should have been a very positive thing, but, uh, as usual, people find ways of, of twisting it. But the board also went, is going forward with the process of being, uh, to do, have the EP, federal EPA determine that we have met our ozone, I'm sorry, our PM-10 standard, uh, our PM-10 plan, which was submitted, uh, has been litigated. And the fact, the fact that some folks don't like our plan did not prevent it from being successful. And, and our plan was to come into PM-10 compliance by 2010. Instead, we met that by 2003, and then we've gone to three years beyond that and actually four now without any violations other than you can, you're not, you're not, um, dinged for having, um, weather-driven type of situations where you have strong winds that would come up and create dust that otherwise you're not responsible for. And so, um, oddly enough, in my mind, the environmental community stood up and that were there and, and opposed. The part of this process requires us to have a maintenance agreement, and our maintenance agreement essentially says, um, the plan that got us here stays in effect. In other words, we've adopted these rules for PM-10, and even though we have met the standard, nobody gets a relaxation. All the rules stay in place. And, um, and so it's, in my mind, that should have been more of a simple procedural issue. Uh, in fact, the environmental community tried to make it a substantive one, wanted to have more time, and a couple of our board members agreed with them. But it did pass, and so this is critical for Tulare County and all of our, our region because we are under a federal lockdown as, as far as, as far as federal transportation dollars. Part of our getting out from underneath that federal lockdown is the action that the board took last, uh, Thursday. As we are found to be in compliance, that will relieve us of one of those elements that now keeps in a federal lockdown situation. So it was a substantive issue, but it is really a good news issue because our air quality is improving and the fact that we've met these standards, uh, way in advance of, of when we proposed to do so, uh, is good news. So I wanted to make the board aware of that. Thanks. And I will be going to Sacramento this Thursday for a commission on state mandates, uh, meeting.
You're doing a great job. Thank you.
Have you seen anybody yet?
No, but he's actually, for once, uh, there's a representative on the commission for state mandates that actually, um, speaks up and has a point of view and makes salient points, um, even if the rest of them don't agree with him. I'm, I'm being very serious about that.
The, the commission is made up primarily of state office holders and their, and their, uh, agents. And, uh, so it's rather difficult for the local members who are two to carry the day, but we, we give it a valiant effort.
It's, I'm just telling, I'm just telling you what I hear, that it's, it's, uh, it's a whole different ballgame. And I appreciate that.
Well, since you started, I'll let you continue.
Oh, okay. I can do that. Um, last Friday, uh, I, uh, drove to, uh, the campus of UCLA. It's always interesting to me how it takes a small amount of time to go the first hundred and sixty miles, but it's the last ten takes almost as much time as the first hundred and sixty. But it was, uh, getting to the end of the, uh, other pension employment benefits commission meetings. It actually, um, is becoming less of a public hearing, less of the same repetitive, you know, you can't do this, you can't do this, you can't do this, and more, um, very good discussion and looking towards some type of recommendations. I don't know that we're there yet. We have three, four months left before we have a report back to the governor. It is interesting to me how it's supposed to be an other pension employment benefits commission, which would mean we should be discussing benefits other than the basic pension, but it's all over the place. So I'm not exactly sure what will come out of that, but it's interesting discussion and it, it also makes me feel good that, um, the plan we have currently in this county is working well. And, uh, we certainly don't have the extreme situations that we find, uh, with other jurisdictions involved in this. And when you think about it, it's, even within the PERS system, there's, I don't know, six thousand, seven thousand, eight thousand different plans, even within PERS, and that's just a part of it. I mean, as we sit there, a lot of the testimony and a lot that, the conversation is about state employees. And that's only a third of public employees in the state of California that receive pension benefits and other pension benefits. So, um, I think we'll have something to report, but it's, uh, it's getting, you can either say it's more interesting or curioser and curioser, as the old saying goes. Thursday and Friday, uh, I will be attending probably my last, uh, CSAC executive committee, uh, retreat, uh, which will be interesting. And one of the things that we will be discussing is once again, this, the ever-changing, ever-morphing, um, health plans that are, are out there floating around, whether it's the governors or whomevers. They've all seemed to morph into one and, and we're being asked to sign on a plan that we haven't seen. So there will be a lot of discussion about that. We understand some of the points and some of the points make s- sense from a county perspective. It's just those unseen details that no one's, uh, anxious to sign on to. So that should also be interesting. And I know we have time next week, but just want to remind everybody that's what I'm calling super weekend to Tulare County next week with our, uh, airboard, uh, meeting for a day and a half and, uh, a joint meeting of the air, airboard and all those that attend that seminar with the California Partnership, the California Partnership's first annual, uh, I mean, first report out, if you will, uh, meeting and, uh, and some of the work that's been happening with the partnership and what we consider our successes and biz talk and the, uh, LPOA National Convention should be a big week. And I think that's all I have. I'm sure I've forgotten something, but old age, you know.
Fifty, fifty what?
If you must know, fifty.
Thirty-nine?
No, fifty-seven.
The press is writing that down.
Oh, they always get it.
Yeah, but Connie looks over here and be smiking.
Hey, you looked off of good for fifty-seven though, Connie.
Okay, whatever it is you want me to vote for, I will. Thank you.
Sounds like you're skeptical when they hand you a blank piece of paper with an X at the bottom that says sign here.
Yeah, yeah, just a little.
Uh, just two things. Last Thursday, we had a, another round of meetings with our Tulare County Gang Task Force. The suppression committee met in Tulare. The, uh, intervention committee met here in Visalia over at the workforce investment department. Both groups made a lot of headway. Uh, Captain Dal Cleek, uh, came out of that meeting very excited about the progress that the suppression group was able to make. They're having to, uh, they're able to have sit-down discussions and collaborative, uh, efforts where they're working together that they've not experienced in the past. So they're very excited about what's coming to that. The district attorney has stepped up and taken on some additional responsibilities for the committee that, uh, that was pleasing to the entire group. Last, last thing I'll report, Friday morning, uh, my wife and I went out to the Thousand Hands Park and Riverway Sports Park, had an exciting time. We actually cut and installed twelve pieces of wood on that huge structure out there that probably has hundreds of thousands of pieces of wood. It took us four hours to put twelve pieces of wood up. It was very difficult, four pieces of wood, or twelve pieces of wood. But it's lost in the, uh, lost in the hundreds of thousands, but the, the park was dedicated, uh, Sunday afternoon and actually finished yesterday afternoon. So wonderful, uh, park built all by volunteers. Two, uh, contractors came from New York where, where they do this for, uh, that's their jobs. They go around and help communities build these parks. So it was a very successful, uh, event where literally thousands of, uh, people came out and worked together and, and put this park together for the children. So I encourage you to go out and see it. It's a wonderful park.
Uh, yesterday morning, uh, along Phil's lines with the gang task force, I met with, uh, Captain Dal Cleek and Sheriff Bill Whitman and Chief McMillan from Porterville PD. And we're putting together a joint effort between the county and the city for the gang task force in that area to beef up our presence in the South County. So, uh, hopefully that's going to be a big impact on that community and hopefully we can get the community to work as neighborhood watch to watch their own areas and be the eyes and ears that the county and the, and the police departments can't be and work together in conjunction with them to see if we can't help stamp out these gangs. And also last night, I had the opportunity to attend the four-H, uh, banquet for the winners of the, of their four-H books. And, uh, it was great to see the youth out there and, uh, got an opportunity to get up and talk to them for a few minutes. I've been a four-H leader for twenty-four years. So it was a great program and, uh, got to congratulate, uh, all the winners over there last night. It was, uh, it was great. Connie was there too.
Next year, you can get a twenty-five year pin if you just hang in there one more year, buddy.
Yesterday, we had, I believe, a very historical meeting, and that is the joint meeting between the city of Visalia, Tulare, the county, Quea Delta Conservation District and the Tulare Irrigation District. I think it's the first time that we've had a joint meeting of five public entities trying to address, uh, a common issue. And the common issue is water. We're looking at a project, uh, a small project in Moonee's Grove for recharge. And that project may grow from that meeting. And we're also looking at, uh, getting help to master plan in Moonee's Grove. If the need for recharge grows from its present state, it could make a total difference on the, the general, not the general, but the, uh, new master plan of Moonee's Grove. So I was very encouraged, the fact that we had such a meeting. And I believe when you have five public entities meeting and if you're looking for a common cause solution with five entities, you're going to reach that solution much faster than each entity trying to reach it on its own. My hearing's off a little today because I have salt crystals still stuck in there from the Pacific Ocean.
We thought maybe it was, we thought maybe it was residual, something else that was residual, but maybe not.
Uh, I also like to comment on the action the board took today on the ordinance that we just approved. This ordinance is a general ordinance that can affect several projects that we have in Tulare County. It's not geared to one specific project. And it seems that the opposition on, on this ordinance has been from a group that's generally opposed to one proposed project. You know, it, it, I've had many meetings with different groups on projects. It, it amazes me how many times that you go over the, some of the, the, uh, the procedure of how a project gets approved, that it just doesn't seem to make any difference. It's, it's kind of frustrating, but, uh, everybody has their own agendas. And the one thing that we talked about smart growth is that smart growth, when I was in college and I took this subject as part of, uh, option in my major, is that smart growth was to be put in the foothills. Your, most your development for a new residential would be put in the foothills on lesser agricultural, quality agricultural, uh, land than on the valley floor. And if I had my way, if I had my own agenda, quite frankly, there would be a fence around our prime agricultural land, which is located surrounding the cities of Visia and Tulare. But that's not practical. So I think we have to look at the practical side of things and if wherever we can move our population to lesser quality ground, I think that's a very viable option. And especially when you're not drilling new wells to drain the overdrafted, uh, underground water, table that we are experiencing today. So if we direct all our growth into towns that rely on groundwater, in the, in the long run, it will catch up to us faster. So with that, I'm probably in deep trouble.
I don't think so, supervisor. In the nineteen eighties, a different board of supervisors sat here and, you know, created that, had the same thought, that, that's why they created the foothill management growth plan. I happen to know one of those supervisors and to them, at the time, it made sense.
Well, that's what they used to teach in, in school, is, in college, is smart growth was putting your population in, uh, lesser productive agricultural ground. And I don't know where that concept has changed, but throughout the valley, we look at communities such as Sacramento County, who has done exactly that. Kings County is looking at that now. Fresno Madera County on its east side grazing land are looking at, uh, major plan developments. I don't know where Tulare County, uh, got off track. And I don't mean to be representative of Tulare County, but somewhere, someone missed the cost of smart growth. With that, the, uh, we have need for closed session?
Chairman, we do. Uh, we have, item A is off agenda. You've already considered item C. That leaves items B and D on your board's closed session agenda. I do not anticipate any announcements.
Thank you. Thank you for your attendance there.